... for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Hattis.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dobrovolski.
Here.
Councilwoman McAcorin.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Show him to be excused.
Councilman Dickerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Lantini.
Here.
Councilwoman Shackelford.
Here.
First item on the agenda is City Council minutes, the regular meeting of July 16th, 2002. Move approval.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item two is request, request from Donna McAcorin, Director of the Chamber of Commerce, for permission to conduct sidewalk sales on August 8th, 9th, and 10th, 2002. Move approval.
Motion been made and supported. Is it McAcorin, you want to say anything about it?
Just all come out and shop the sidewalk sales.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item three is bid awards. Item 3A is consideration of the bid award for six rifles for the police department to be paid from a local law enforcement block grant in the amount of $3,634.20 and a 10% match from the police department materials and supplies budget in the amount of $403.80.
Move approval for the low bid from CPM Distributors Incorporated out of Detroit for $4,038.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 3B is consideration of the bid award for two laser radar, radar speed measuring instruments for the police department to be paid from a local law enforcement block grant in the amount of $6,390 and a 10% match from the police department materials and supplies budget in the amount of $710. Move approval.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 3C, consideration of the bid award for a picnic shelter in Rotary Park 2 to be paid from a donation from the developers of Monroe Commons subdivision.
Move approval for Jennings of Michigan, Elgin Incorporated out of Metamora for $9,795.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item four is ordinances and amendments. Item 4A, second reading and adoption of the rezoning of 4953 Benoy Road, parcel number 55-023-99-0014-000, from single-family residential R1B to business limited B1. So move. Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 4B is first reading of an amendment to the fire prevention code, ordinance number 1610.O2A. So move. Support.
Motion been made and supported. Any discussion? Chief, would you like to speak on that?
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, this is just to bring the fire code up to date and to work along with the building code and the Michigan State Fire Prevention Code also. There's very little changes that affect anybody. There's no significant changes whatsoever to existing buildings.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief. Mrs. McAcorin.
Mr. Mayor, before we go on to comments from persons in the audience, might we slip back to number three for a moment about the picnic shelter in Rotary Park number two? I'm assuming that there will be a thank you from the city to the developer of Monroe Commons for this donation.
It was part of the agreement, but yes, we'd be glad to send a letter to them on behalf of the city thanking them for the money.
Okay, now we have comment from person in the audience and matter not covered by the council agenda. Mr. Mayor.
I didn't want to be first. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have three items I'd like to bring to your attention. It appears through indirect discussion that we are in a new congressional district. However, in this particular time, unless I missed it, there's been no written documentation as to what that district is and its political boundaries. Ten years ago, there was a map showing the various cities and what the district looked like, and if it changed numbers. I think before it was the 15th and then it went 13th, as I write something. Now we're back to, I really don't know. I'd just like to, there's been nothing from us. I don't know if that's something we can do in our newsletter, mention what district we're in, maybe not do the map, but certainly mention what district we're in and when it became effective. If, secondly, Mr. Mayor, I happen to be in Detroit, working with a volunteer group on one of the education proposals, and it came to my attention, at least in Detroit, that the absentee ballot now carries a fee in postage of 60 cents, at least the ballot they're using in Detroit. So I called our clerk and asked what are our ballots costing the clerk, and I was told 56 cents. When I talked to my godmother, who's a senior citizen, and I asked her, I said, "By the way, how many stamps did you put on your ballot?" She said she only put one, with the added amount, three cents or four cents. In Detroit, at least, as I stand here tonight, and I'm glad I'm mentioning this before the election, because this is the proper time to do it, some of the ballots are being held up at the pulse office for insufficient postage. I don't know if we're having that experience. The one obvious problem is on the envelope, unlike if you get from Hallmark's, it says, "Put extra postage." There's nothing there telling those people that they need more than one stamp, or it might require extra postage. The ballot weight changes from election to election, given what proposals you have in there, how much papers in there. I'd just like to bring that to my mayor, my council, as a citizen of Wayne, and just wondered if you'd like to be first in looking at that, since they've passed the increase. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I wondered if the council would have any objections. I know I have a seven-year-old grandchild, as you know. There was a young lady that unfortunately was taken away from our home in a housing development in Stanton, California, and they were able to find the individual very quickly. And listening to the police officer, he said they had a program in Stanton, California, where they went into the school and taught children how to identify people, and that's the system that the five-year-old used in helping the police capture the person that hurt that child. I was just wondering if it's possible for us to ask, request that, since they said that anyone wanted it, any police agency, they would send it to them gladly, and see if that's something that we might use to protect our children. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. On the first question, the mailing, I don't think the clerk ever mentioned we have any problem with the return of some...
Of the absentee ballots?
Yes.
Okay. The size of the ballot might change every time, but that's in the outgoing mail. The incoming mail is always the same. It's only your punch card and the lightweight styrofoam, so the incoming mail is still just a regular fee. We pay the outgoing mail cost for, when the ballot goes out, with the whole instruction sheet and everything, and sometimes there is a lot of information that goes out to the voter, but that cost is paid by the city. When the voter sends the ballot back, all they're sending back is their punch card with the styrofoam, and that's the same every time, and that just requires a regular first-class stamp. And we also do call the post office on Election Day if there are any ballots at the post office, and we will go pick them up.
And on the crime prevention issue, or the, I think the chief could speak on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what Mr. Netter is referring to is the Child Alert Program. Currently, the children at Duane Weston School District are taught three different programs by the Wayne Police Department, TEAM there, and the Michigan Child Watch Program. All three of those programs incorporate exactly what the Child Alert Program is doing. So our children are getting already more than the Stanton, California program. We researched it, and we've already looked into the Child Alert Program, and again, they're already getting three different programs from us, which are more than the Child Alert Program.
Thank you. And then the last one, the redistricting situation, I agree with you, there are a lot of confusion, a lot of people don't know with which district and number. I think we ask the city manager in the newsletter in the future if you could find some information and provide the newspaper, and have it in our newsletter too, to educate the people on the redistricting situation. Thank you.
In addition, Mr. Mayor, the clerk has already sent the new cards.
Yes. Everyone received a new voter card with the new district numbers.
But we will, in the newsletter that comes out before November 1st, or around then, we will remind people that we're in a new congressional district, and actually, our House district in Lansing is different too, so, but we will have an article in there reminding people about it.
It's not only the number of the district, and people need to know which city we end, like we're with North Canton, North Vail, some of the detailed information about that redistricting. Any other comment? Saying none, we move the agenda.
Item five is communications and reports. Item 5A is fax alerts and fax advisories from the Michigan Municipal League regarding state revenue sharing.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as you can see in your packet, and also at your place tonight, there was about a half a dozen communications to you from the Michigan Municipal League since our last meeting, and also at your place tonight, there, well, there's one from Conference of Western Wayne, as well as tonight, there's one from the Wayne County Commission. All of these communications, whether they're fax alerts or fax advisories, are regarding the fact that at the end of July, the governor vetoed a bill that had been passed by both houses of the legislature, which in vetoing the bill, it put all revenue sharing, all statutory revenue sharing for the cities, villages, townships, and counties in the state, it did away with it, some $850 million. The governor in his veto gave some reasons why he vetoed the bill. Our share of that $850 million is 1.4 million. That's our revenue, that's our statutory revenue sharing. If that veto is not overridden, then the city would have to reduce 1.4 million dollars from our budget, and we would have to do that fairly quickly, as we're already into the fiscal year. The fax alerts and advisories and the communication from Wayne County are all aimed at asking the city to do two things. First, to pass a resolution, asking our representative and our senator to vote to override Governor Engler's veto, and secondly, to attend a rally on August 13th at 9:00 in the morning at the state Capitol, to join with other cities, villages, townships, and counties from across the state, asking the whole legislature to take up the matter of overriding the veto when they go into session. As I understand it, they're only planning to be in session one day next week, and then I believe their plan is to adjourn until after, until after Labor Day. But, so it's hoped by all of the communities, and there've been editorials about it in the paper and on the news, et cetera. It's hoped that there will be sufficient state senators and state representatives that are willing to vote to override the veto, so that those funds will in fact flow to the communities. Our first payment on revenue sharing is due in October, and so we don't have a great deal of time. So I would ask that you pass a resolution tonight that you would send on to Senator Bennett, Representative Plakus, any other senators or representatives that you'd like us to send it to. We'd also send it to Conference of Western Wayne, the Wayne County Commission, and the Michigan Municipal League stating your wishes.
Move approval on that request.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. I called the state senator Lauren Bennett's office, I called Bruce Patterson, I called John Stewart, Mr. Plakus, our state representative, Glenn Anderson from Westland, to ask them to support override the veto, and we just received, the council and I received, a letter from Theodore McCarter, he's in favor of overriding the veto, the veto. So it looked like we might have enough to override that, but we need the pressure to go from the people, the council, everyone, if you could call beside this resolution the office and show your support to override the governor's veto, that would be excellent idea too. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, along with that, Mr. Zack mentioned how much money?
1.4 million.
What percentage of that would that be of our whole budget?
Our budget's about 17 million, so it's in the neighborhood of about 8%.
Could you tell us briefly what that would mean, since I understand that most of it is used for police and pocket?
Well, if we had to eliminate 1.4 million from the budget, first of all, that'd be the city council's decision as to what we would eliminate, and we would make recommendation to them as to where either employees or services or programs would be reduced. We went through a painful process in May, dealing with the fact that revenue sharing had already been cut, and so we, for the first time in the history, at least the modern history of Wayne that I'm aware of and the other members of the staff are aware of, we actually recommended to the council that full-time people be laid off, and part-time people be laid off. So we'd have to go back through that process again and try and find some combination of 1.4 million dollars. It could be by raising fees, it could be by eliminating programs, or cutting back hours of operation of various city programs and services, or by outright laying off of staff. It probably would take a combination of all of those things, and to say what exactly we would recommend, at this point, it would be premature. The department heads have all been briefed last week about it. They know that if the veto is not overridden, that we'll have to go back to work and bring a new budget to the council in September.
Mayor, I also heard that that date's going to be used for the hearings or the voting on the land bank issue.
And final note, on August 13th, I will be going to Lansing, if anybody would like to join us too, so probably we'll be leaving from here from the city hall around 7:30.
7:30.
7:30, so.
AM?
AM, yes.
If anyone would like to ride along, and we would be glad to take you.
If any, no other comment, we move to the next item, please.
Item 5B is memo from the chief of police concerning tobacco compliance checks at retailers in the city for the period February through June 2002.
Chief, you want to comment on this, please?
Mayor, members of the city council, funded by a grant from the Michigan Department of Community Health, enabled the Wayne Police Department, specifically the cop crew, to conduct 92 tobacco compliance checks at tobacco retailers within our city from February to June of 2002. The program involved was a police decoy, 16-years-old, sent into a licensed establishment and purchased cigarettes. In our 92 attempts, we had eight tobacco retailers that sold, rather, seven tobacco retailers, was 8%, and through, as a result of the grant, the city Wayne Police Department will be reimbursed $3,680 for our compliance checks.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 5C is memo from the chief of police and thank you letter from Donna McAcorin of the Wayne Rotary Club regarding the police officers who attended their neighborhood picnics on July 10th and 17th, 2002.
Will you read the letter, please?
Dear Mike, please extend Wayne Rotary's thank you to the Wayne Police Officers who appeared at both Rotary Park picnics. The neighbors and rotarians enjoyed seeing them and the dogs. Thank you all for helping to make both picnics successful. Sincerely yours, Donna McAcorin, Wayne Rotary.
Thank you. Will you thank the officer involved for us, please? Okay, next item.
Item 5D is memo from the city engineer concerning the public housing department's receipt of $109,624 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for the 2002 capital fund program.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the $109,624 is going to be used by the public housing division for, to paint the wood trim and treat the cedar shakes on the Glenwood Road properties. Also, they have a very old pickup truck that they are going to replace, and there's some computer equipment to be purchased. The 2001 monies is being used for parking lot improvements for the public housing units and other things. These monies, the 2002 monies, will be spent next year, and to improve the exterior of the buildings, as well as provide that new truck.
No question, receiving file. Next item.
Item 5E is memo from the chief of police regarding the grand opening of the Westchester Towers Cop Shop on August 19th, 2002.
Chief, would you talk about that a minute?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, since 1998, the Wayne Police Department has started a concept where we put, we call them cop shops, actually, police resource network centers, in the Dairy Mart, 7-Eleven on Annapolis, as well as the mobile mini-mart. As time progresses, so do our needs, and we had an opportunity to move into an actual office of Westchester Towers at the 35800 building, which is, which is the most westernly building of Westchester Towers. Initially, when we had the cop shop, they were a cubicle with folding chairs and a laptop computer. We've thus since have changed it. Now we're going to have an actual office area, we're going to have a full desk, we're going to have regular chairs for a victim or the officers to sit in. And we've notified the Dairy Mart and thanked them for their, for what they've done towards the idea of community policing in our city, and told them by September 1st, we will be vacating the Dairy Mart, the new operation. Officers are already starting to use the one at the Westchester Towers. On August 19th, we'll have an open house for council, as well as the community, to see our new facility. It's going to be open from 12 to 8, and we'll have cake and punch in the entire time. Right around a little bit after 6 o'clock or so, we'll have an official ribbon cutting the area. The officer, the cop shop, will still be accessible to all the people, it's still going to be, it'll be accessible 24 hours a day, just as we would have at the Dairy Mart. For any questions?
Okay. Thank you, chief. Let's move the agenda.
Item 5F is letter from Mark Deneen, Senior Vice President and General Manager of Wide Open West concerning changes in their cable television service.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, like at your last meeting, there was a letter from Fred Eaton of Comcast. This letter by Mr. Deneen is similar in nature. It's relative to some changes that they're making effective in September, relative to rates and other things. The Cable Communications Act took the city out of being involved in these matters. They're just sending these letters to us out of courtesy, and so we pass them along to you, and all this information will be sent to Wide Open West customers in addition.
Any question? Not move the agenda, please?
Item 5G is memo from the fire chief and thank you letter from Donna McAcorin of the Wayne Rotary Club concerning the firefighters that attended their neighborhood picnics on July 10th and 17th, 2002.
Will you read the letter, please?
Dear Rob, please extend Wayne Rotary's thank you to the fine personnel who appeared at both Rotary Park picnics. The neighbors and rotarians appreciated their presence. Thank you all for helping to make both picnics successful. Sincerely yours, Donna McAcorin, Wayne Rotary.
Thank you, chief. Will you thank the officer involved for us, please? Next item. Mrs. McAcorin?
Yes, may I also add that a letter was sent to Recreation to thanking them for the fun squad and their input at the Rotary Park picnics.
Okay, thank you also.
We'll have that for the next agenda.
Well, that's okay, I just wanted...
Yeah.
Okay. Next item.
Item 5H is memo from the fire chief regarding the blood drive held on July 24th, 2002.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we didn't get enough blood, so I need to light everybody up here, and we're doing the second round. No, we had a very successful blood drive this year. We had 55 people that come and attempted to donate, and out of the 55, they received 47 pints of blood, which was a large increase from a couple years ago when we did it the last time. So we're looking forward to doing this again, and I see a few friendly faces up there that were down, was giving blood, so we'll see you back again. And the ones that I didn't see, I'll drag you down there next time. So I want to thank everybody who did participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item.
Item 5I is memo from the city engineer concerning comments made by a resident at the July 16th, 2002 city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, if you recall, and Mrs. Kraus spoke to you at your last council meeting about some concerns she had. As you can see from Mr. Algar Reeves' memo, the staff met with her relative to the items that she was questioning, and they've resolved some of the issues, some of them are to be resolved yet. Mr. Ostrowski's here tonight representing Mr. Algar Reeves, who's on vacation, so if you have any questions of us, we'll try to answer them, but I believe Pat will tell you, as I, that a couple of the things that are, that was thought there was a violation relative to the fence, but after closer examination, there wasn't, but there are some issues here regarding that swimming pool that are being worked out by the homeowner.
Thank you. If it's no question, we move the agenda, please.
Item 5J is memo from the Parks and Recreation Director regarding Wheel Fest 2002.
Kim?
Well, I don't know about you, but I can't believe it's this time of the year again, but Wheel Fest is right around the corner. It is scheduled for August 22nd through the 25th. On Thursday night, our activities begin with our own local talent showcase, and a band will be following at 8:30 called Artifact. On Friday, the Wheel Fest parade is scheduled for 6 o'clock, and again, we will have Mustang Sally back. We had many rave reviews last year about Mustang Sally, and we were lucky enough to get them back on our calendar. On Saturday, we'll have the regular Soapbox Derby and the Classic Car Cruise Show, and then we're really excited because Mitch Ryder will be in the city of Wayne, and we expect a just large crowd for that. On Sunday, again, we'll have the Classic Car Show along Second Street, and the First United Methodist Church will be having their church service down here in Gaudi Park, and this will be our second year having our teen bands showcase their talents down here at the amphitheater at 1:00. And then we will have some entertainment also on Sunday night. Also throughout the weekend, we will be having a small carnival. The Vegas tent will be opened, and a new family entertainment tent will be available on site. All of our residents will be mailed their brochure on August 7th, so please keep an eye out for that. I'll have a total listing of all the events and times. We hope we have great weather as usual, so keep us in your prayers, but we look forward to another great Wheel Fest and just hope that our residents will invite their family and friends and people from other communities to come down and see what a great festival we put on.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 5K is letter from the chairman of the COPS Committee concerning donations to the police scholarship fund and the animal shelter.
Can you read the letter, please?
Mr. Zack, I would like to start by expressing my appreciation for the people of Wayne who supported the COPS Committee's goal of building a much-needed police station... supported the COPS committee's goal of building a much-needed police station for our city. One of the great things about our city is the citizens and their hometown pride. That became even more evident when they supported a millage during down economic times. The COPS committee was formed by citizens to help inform the public of the great need to continue forward progress during these trying times. The funding used to deliver the message was raised by generous contributions from local businesses and citizens alike. After the election, there were unspent funds that the committee voted to donate to three local causes. I ask that you accept this money and put it into the funds that were voted on by the committee. We are donating two-hundred and seventy-five dollars to both the animal shelter and the police scholarship fund. We also donated one hundred dollars to the Wayne One Hundred Club to help support that worthy cause. Thank you and the council again for your support. Sincerely, Don Hartford, Chairman, COPS.
Don, thank you for your hard work and effort, and I think Mr. Boyle dropped the check to the chief today. I appreciate that. Do you like to say anything? Mr. Boyle?
We did our talking when we were on the committee.
Thank you. It's what makes this city of Wayne a great community, people like you and him and people who get involved and support all the communities need. Mr. Nutter? Sure. Next item, please.
Item six is general items for consideration. Item six A is recommendation to declare three-five-three-five Elm Street a hazard nuisance and assess the charges to the owner of record. So move, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six B is recommendation to declare three-seven-seven-five-zero Michigan Avenue West a hazard nuisance and assess the charges to the owner of record. So move, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six C, recommendation to approve payment to AIS construction equipment on an emergency basis in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for the repair of a backhoe in the Department of Public Works to be paid from the Department of Public Works fiscal year two thousand and one, two thousand and two equipment repair budget.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six D, recommendation to approve payment to Medtronic Physio Control on an emergency basis in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of a defibrillator monitor for the fire department to paid for the fire department operating materials and supplies budget.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. Any question? Mrs. McEckern?
Yes, I had a question for the chief. The defibrillator, is that the same type that were purchased by the Rotary Club?
No, ma'am.
No, different then?
Different ones. The ones from the Rotary Club that were purchased are automatic external defibrillators.
Right, and these are manual?
For laypersons, and these are ones for paramedics and hospital uses.
Okay, so the ones purchased by Rotary then are readily serviceable? I mean, they're not, you're not going to experience the type of problem that you are experiencing with this particular brand?
No, because we use the, our present monitors, we use the present monitors approximately eight hundred times a year, and so they do get used up, probably more than like emergency room hospitals, they use them more than that when we use them in the field. So, we use them, you know, eight hundred times a year.
Right.
And so that the wear and tear has just been atrocious on those.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six E, recommendation to approve a resolution in support of an application to the Michigan Department of Transportation regarding funding from the Critical Bridge Program for the Newburg Road Bridge Replacement Project.
So move, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six F is recommendation to approve a six-year collective bargaining agreement with the Twenty-Ninth District Court employees for the period July first, two thousand and two through June thirtieth, two thousand and eight.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six G is weed list number two thousand and two dash seven.
So move, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item six H is change order number one with Engen Thule Doyle and Associates Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars regarding the Angelo de Mario Playground Project to be paid from a grant from the two thousand and two Community Development Block Grant Program.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. Any question? Mr. Nutter?
Yes, sir. This is good news. Could we hear what it means?
Kim?
It is very good news, Jim, and you've been waiting a long time for this, and so has many of the residents over in that area. What this means is that we were able to obtain community block grant funds to fund a new playground structure over in the Angelo de Mario Park, and because our bids were accepted within a reasonable timeline, we were able to piggyback our last two bids received for our community playground projects that were just built in May. The good news of this is that we'll be able to build this community playground this fall. The scheduled dates are September seventeenth and eighteenth. It is during the week because the playground company that we're dealing with, their weekends are booked because these community playground projects are so big, but we decided even though we could do it during the week, we really wanted to get it up in time so that the kids over in that area would have the fall to utilize it. It's going to be very similar to the playground structure over in Kiwanis Park. In fact, it's going to be the exact same structure with a little bit of different colors.
You're going to have the mayor to cut a ribbon?
He's going to help build it.
That's right. He'll help build that one. He's the professional. Okay?
You're going to, Kim, you're going to look for some volunteers like we did?
We sure will be. I'll be coming back to you on a number of occasions, again, asking for volunteers, not only to build it that day, but also all of the pre-construction items, counting of the bolts and little things like that. It takes all kinds of different levels of skill and...
We'll be looking for wheelbarrows and rakes and tools to borrow again, like we did at Gaudi Park here in Kiwanis.
That'd be great, Jim. In fact, maybe I can get the name, the president of the cooperation. Great, thank you.
Comment from member of the city council and mayor not covered by the council agenda.
Oh, you need to vote.
Oh, we need to vote on it, okay. Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Okay. Now, we move to comment from members of the city council and mayor not covered by the council agenda. We start with this side.
Nothing, sir?
No, thank you. Remember tomorrow's election day, everybody go and vote for your favorite candidate.
Any on this side?
No.
Ms. Lantini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am regretfully going to resign from council today. Not a very easy thing for me to do, but I would like to thank all of the council members, Mr. Zek department heads, for always being there when I had a question, for answering those questions and just being the professional people that they are. And the citizens of Wayne, I think, are very fortunate to have such a good city to live in, and a lot of that is owed to the department heads and John Zek, of course. So, thank you.
You're welcome, and it was a great honor to serve with you. You served this community very well.
Thank you.
So did your dad.
Thank you.
Serving this community, it's run in your family, and we are very thankful to you for all the good things you supported this community for. A job well done, and whatever you do in the future, we wish you well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Zek?
As part of the tradition of the city council, I hope you'll ask Ms. Lantini if she would be willing to come back at a subsequent council meeting where we can present her the resolution that we typically prepare, her picture and those kinds of things. So, maybe if you ask her tonight, we can kind of lock her into some time in the future that would be convenient to her to come back, and we'll coordinate that to make sure we have all the materials ready for that particular council meeting.
But what I like to do is give that between her and you to choose the right time and convenient for you, Ms. Lantini, and we'd be honored to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in case, we don't know when that meeting's going to take place, in case I'm not here, I too like to thank Ms. Lantini for her time, and even though we always didn't agree on all the issues, you know, there was always the respect that Ms. Lantini gave to me and each member of this council, a positive attitude about the city, and those aren't things that, sometimes people don't realize how tough this job is and how demanding it is on your families and on your lives, and, you know, I give her credit for serving up here with us, and like I said, we didn't have the most wonderful meetings at all times, but when we left here, there was respect, there were smiles, there was how you doing when she came in, and how are you doing, Bob, and smiles, and they were sincere. And I think that whoever takes these seats down the road, you know, I hope we get people that are, you know, similar to Joey and Pam and Al and Donna and, you know, Bev and Tom, and we've always been fortunate enough, even though, like I said, and I hate to keep going back, of not agreeing, and it's okay to disagree, but I just think the respect, and I think that's what I'll remember about Joey, even, you know, through everything she went through this year, you know, she was strong, people came after her in different occasions, she held strong, and, you know, you've done a great job, and we will miss you. I'm shocked that you're stepping down tonight, and, but, you know, your family's important, and I wish you luck.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you. I like to take advantage. I know it's not proper to discuss personal thing at the city's time, but I can't let this occasion go by. Today, I've been married to my wife for thirty-five years. And with a very serious note, her mom think I'm a very lucky man to have her, but my mom, on the other hand, think she's lucky to have me, but I think they both right. We're both lucky. Without her, I wouldn't be able to do the thing I do and I like to do in life. Her support mean great deal to me. For thirty-five years, she worked with me hand in hand in the business with these five kids. I was able to volunteer in many different way in my community, and I want to thank her publicly today and tell her thank you for thirty-five years of love and support.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now, we move the agenda.
There are six items before you on the consent calendar.
Move for approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. General, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam, the clerk, raise the roll call.
Mayor Hattis?
Here.
Mayor Protem Dobalowski?
Here.
Councilwoman McEckern?
Here.
Councilman Kelly?
Here.
Councilman Dickerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Shackelford?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, please.
First item on the agenda is city council minutes. One A is special meeting of August fifth, two thousand and two due to the primary election of August sixth, two thousand and two.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item one B is regular meeting of August sixth, two thousand and two.
Move approval, support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry.
Item two?
I like to move item eight A. Resignation from Councilwoman Josephine Lantini concerning Councilwoman Lantini resignation. Mrs. Lantini certainly will be missed. She did excellent job as representative of the people in this town, and with the council pleasure and the acceptance of resignation.
So move, but I'd also like to say something.
Please.
I'd like to tell you, Joey, that I've enjoyed serving with you on this council very much. You're extremely capable, you're level-headed, you're fair-minded and conscientious. You've been a very good councilwoman, and this council and this town shall miss you and thank you.
Need support for the motion?
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carry. I really like to oppose that, but I...
Larry.
I like ginger better.
Thank you.
Can I have your kids here, please?
The prima ballerina, eh?
Mrs. Wayne.
Sorry.
I know you love so much, you're marked so much, but I like to present you with her pictures.
Have to raise your right hand and swear you hang it in your dorm. I have to fly. Okay.
I just wanted to say a few words, but I'd like to face council because... This is just my letter of resignation. I just wanted to read it. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation from the City of Wayne City Council. letter as my formal resignation from the city of Wayne City Council, effective August 6th, 2002. It's been a pleasure to serve the fine citizens of Wayne for the past five years. I also enjoyed working with my fellow council members. Our city manager, department heads and employees are representative of what I consider to be a professional staff working together to make Wayne a great place to live. Special thanks to Ms. Jane Martin, who has always taken time to answer my questions and follow through on inquiries, which probably wasn't real easy for her to do all the time. I would like to thank council. I would also like to thank the citizens. I think it's very appropriate right now to thank the citizens who elected me and were so supportive. I appreciate all the cards and the phone calls. After my resignation at the last meeting, I do appreciate it. I'm gonna miss you, Mr. Dickerson.
I miss you too.
And we did not agree all the time, but as he stated at the last meeting, whatever was said in the council chamber stayed there, and we were always very professional with each other after that. Mr. Hattas, you've been a great mayor.
Thank you.
Very happy to have you serving the citizens. Donna, there is just no council person like you, and the citizens should be very proud to have you sitting there and very fortunate. If there's anyone who doesn't do things for their own personal gain, it's Councilwoman McCackren, and I just felt that I had to say that at this time, in case anyone was wondering. They shouldn't wonder. She is, I know her very well, and she does a great job, and thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Joey.
I also hope that after tonight, that the council chooses to replace me in a manner in which, you know, is fair to the people who would like to apply for the position, and just to make it fair, and just thank you very much. I would just like to introduce my family. My daughter Laura, in her last year at state, she's gonna graduate. My mom, Velantini, my good friend Dan and his son Patrick, who's like a son to me, and thank you for being here with me today.
Now, we move the agenda, please.
Item 2 is requests. Item 2A is request to proclaim September 2002 as National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month in Wayne. So moved.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 2B is request to approve a resolution for Marge Bedell as the Diamond of the Community Award winner.
So moved. Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 3 is site plan review. Item 3A is site plan number 2001-37.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. Good evening. Site plan number 2001-37 was an amendment to a site plan, but the applicant has requested to your body to postpone that until the next meeting, which will be September 3rd. They were not available to come to the meeting tonight, and as you know, we request that the applicant is present when they make a request, so if we could do that, please.
So moved said postponement. Support.
Motion been made and supported. All those who agree signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Item 3B is site plan number 2002-21.
Yes, this is the site plan for City Financial at 35171 Michigan Avenue, which is in the Rite Aid Plaza. Chris Towe is representing the site plan. He's the contractor working at the site for the establishment of City Financial. City Financial will be occupying a space in the Rite Aid Plaza. This is Wayne Road and then Michigan Avenue East. They'll be occupying a former cell phone store site right there on the southerly portion of the lot. City Financial is a mortgage lending institution. They'll be adding to the uses in that site, in the strip mall there, and should make a good addition to the...